For real-time transcription, visit your Apple App or Google Play Store and download services such as Live Transcribe or Live Caption. The public is encouraged to join the meeting either online or by phone at the number printed on the agenda, which can be found on the city's website at www.diamondbarca.gov, or in-person, Main Auditorium, South Coast Air Quality Management District. We have also allowed public comments to be submitted in advance to the city clerk. If any were received, they will be noted for the record when we get to the public comments section. This meeting is being recorded, and by participating, you are given your permission to be televised. This meeting will be rebroadcast every Saturday and Sunday at 9:00 a.m., and alternate Tuesdays at 8:00 p.m., and archived for viewing on the city's website at diamondbarca.gov. At this point, we'll go and proceed with the Pledge of Legions, followed by invocation roll call. So please stand for the pledge, then please remain standing for the invocation by Sheikh Nomam Bageh of the Institute of Knowledge. I apologize. Please stand. Ready? Begin.
(inaudible)
Now for the invocation.
He did not show up. Sorry, Mayor.
He's not online? I apologize. Please be seated. First, we have approval of agenda. Actually, let's start with roll call. Christina?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Lowe?
Here.
Councilmember Tang?
Here.
Councilmember Tai?
Here.
Mayor Protem Lu?
Here.
Mayor Chow?
Here, thank you. City Manager Fox, are there any changes to the agenda?
There are no recommended changes, Mayor.
Any reports from the study session?
The study session we held earlier this evening on automated license plate readers, and the item was continued to a future meeting yet to be determined. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll go and move on to Agenda Item Number One, Special Presentation Certificates and Proclamations. And today, we're very happy to proclaim April 2023 as Donate Life Month. And I understand that we have Ms. Rachel Rodriguez here with us. If you want to join us here up here and say a few words about the month, then I will go and take a picture. Thank you. Please come on. Thank you. Great. So, thank you. So we did prepare a proclamation for April as the DMV slash Donate Life Month. You want to say a few things about the month?
Yeah. Thank you so much, Mayor, for this honor once again. I'm a proud resident of Diamond Bar, and so to be able to be a One Legacy Ambassador to our city is something that's very near and dear to my heart. My direct connection to donation was my grandson. This is my grandbaby Malachi. Malachi sadly was a victim of homicide in 2011. He was 16 months old. He was, his life was taken by his mother's boyfriend. My son Daniel, in the darkness of his grief, chose to think of others, and baby Malachi went on to save the lives of four people. He saved the life of a nine-month-old with his liver. A two-year-old little girl received his heart. A 21-year-old received his right kidney, and a 65-year-old received his left kidney. This is the two-year-old who has now just turned 14. She just ran the Orange County Marathon with his little heart, and she also just did another half marathon with his heart. So this is right in front of you, the beauty of organ donation. My grandson, our story is a story of tragedy, a story of hope, and yet a story of purpose. And so the tragedy, of course, is the loss of our baby. The hope is in her face and in his recipient's faces. I am a bereaved grandmother, but it's not the totality of who I am. I now have a purpose as a One Legacy Ambassador for over a decade now. My promise to my grandson, the very last time I held his little hand, I promised to share his story. And so this here today is another fulfillment to that. So I thank you to the City of Diamond Bar for declaring Donate Life as, April is Donate Life Awareness Month. Thank you.
And thank you for being here. I do recall you being here a couple of years ago. Thank you.[283.41][283.41](applause) And I was touched by your story then, I'm touched by your story now. So let's see if my councilmembers have, want to say a few words.
I am so impressed. Clearly, it second natured you, but you could rattle off who got what, when, and because it's second nature, and you know that Malachi continues to make a difference. So thank you for sharing that with us.
Thank you again for sharing your story. It's so touching, and just really struck me how in life, pain and hope is different as far, they're different as night and day, but they kind of go together. And when we can find where they go together, that's what keeps us going, that's part of our humanity. So thank you for sharing that, and I'm really so proud to issue Donate Life Month. Thank you.
I'm a medical doctor. I think that donate of your organ is one of the most noble things humans can do. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, and thank you for sharing the message and for sharing it with the world. And your grandson is, shows us, you know, one person can make a huge difference in the world, and as we see in many different lives, Sarah, and this is amazing. Thank you.
And lastly, how do we in the public, how can we support your mission?
The pink donut, of course. At your DMV, you can always register to be an organ donor, www.californian.org. And also, we do have other things going on. We have a Donate Life Run Walk coming up at the end of the month. And so, you know, it's just to get the word out there, share it with your, with your family members that, you know, you'd like to be a donor and make that decision. 21 people die every single day waiting for a life-saving transplant. So my grandson not only gained his angel wings that day, but he also gained his little superhero cape as he, as he entered the gates of heaven. So we're proud.
Well, thank you so much. Let's take a photo with the proclamation. Thank you.
Yeah, it's such a tragedy. I don't feel like I should be here standing smiling, but then you look at this and you go, oh, I think so.
How can you not?
I think so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, we're gonna go and move on to Item Number Two, City Manager Report. Mr. Fox?
No additional reports this evening.
Thank you. Now we'll move on to public comments. Public comments, the time reserved on each regular meeting agenda to provide an opportunity for members of the public to directly address the city council on consent calendar items or other matters of interest, not on the agenda, that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council. Although the city council values your comments pursuant to the Brown Act, members of the city council or staff may only briefly respond to public comments if necessary, but no extended discussion and no action on such matters may take place. There is a five-minute maximum time limit when addressing the city council. At this time, I will call up speakers. We have submitted a speaker card first, then City Clerk Santana will ask for those callers joining the teleconference on the phone who may wish to speak under public comments. I do have two speaker cards. I'd like to call up Mr. Allen Wilson first.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, member of the city council. My name is Allen Wilson. I am a Diamond Bar resident. I implore the city council to review your consent calendar, Item 5.4, on the maintenance agreement for the Diamond Bar Center. I'm reviewing the report, the report suggesting the council to approve the $98,000 contract for fixing for four rooms. My concern is that reading the report, it's only a couple of pages, and it doesn't, places the flooring in the four rooms of the Diamond Bar Center, but it doesn't say how many 12 foot in those four rooms. And reading the present, the, the, the contrast of the report, it's very confusing, very hard to read how many 12 foot it's in those four rooms. $98,000 is pretty, but I understand the rooms had not been, the flooring had not been done since the Diamond Bar Center was open to the community in 2004. But if you read the report, what truly sent me, I'm reading the, trying to verbiage here, um, what can I? Okay. The flooring parts are, it's replaced in vinyl floors in three rooms, the sycamore pine and maple, and replaced in the wood floor in the oak room with the new vinyl plank flooring. We're going from wood floor to vinyl, to vinyl plank flooring? That's lowering the standards what we expect. I mean, I wouldn't even do that in my own home. I wouldn't go from wood floor to vinyl. I mean, maybe it's me, but they're never the last, but the report, it's only a couple of pages, but it's very confused to me to understand the 12 foot. And, but $98,000, I don't know where someone come up with this. Was this open, was there an open bid on this, for, for to get a lower bid on this? Because I don't see an open bid in the report. Do you really need to ask questions about this before jumping again approving it? But $98,000 is pretty, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. I have Ms. Cynthia Yu. Please join us.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Protem, council members, and city staff, members of audience. My name is Cynthia Yu from Diamond Bar Library. Get ready for spring cleaning the greenway on Wednesday, April 26 at 11:00, coming to learn how to make your own safe and environmentally friendly cleaning product from ingredients that are available in grocery stores at Giver. And this program is sponsored by Diamond Bar Friends of the Library. Please visit our website, lacountylibrary.org, for registration and additional program information. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Yu. Were there any emails received? City Clerk Santana?
Mayor, there were no emails submitted for public comment. There are some members of the public online. If any member joining this, this meeting via teleconference would like to address the city council, please select the raised hand icon in your go-to revenue program. I will unmute callers on the line one at a time, and you will notice your turn to speak when I announce your name and you hear a recorded message, state "unmuted." And I will go ahead and unmute the first caller, Mr. Paul Aiken.
Thank you. Quite often, at the end of the city council, we end in memory of a loved one. Today, we have the passing of Dr. Charles Stanley, 90 years old, from Atlanta, Georgia. Maybe not everybody knew of him. I certainly did. Well-known pastor, much like Billy Graham, Franklin Graham. He will be sorely missed. I'd like to ask Mayor Chow if you would, in the meeting, in memory of Dr. Stanley. Thank you.
Okay, there are no other hand raised, Mayor.
Great, thank you. Anyone in the audience that'd like to address the city council at this point? Seeing none, we're gonna go ahead and close the public comment section and move on to Item Number Four, Schedule of Future Events. Mr. Fox?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. 34 years ago today, Diamond Bar became a city. To help celebrate the fun and excitement, the Windmill Hunt will continue through the end of the month. Hunting can be done at your own pace, and it's still not too late to register. You can register on the city's website or in-person at the Diamond Bar Center. This Saturday, April 22, the city's annual Earth Day celebration will be held at the AQMD parking lot from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. The event will include always-popular free garden mulch giveaway, paper shredding, e-waste collection, a variety of other recycling and conservation-focused information booths and activities. The planning commission meeting for Tuesday, April 25, has been canceled. Coffee with the Cop will be held on Tuesday evening, April 25, from 5:30 to 7:30 p.m. in the Starbucks Inside the Target at Grand in Golden Springs. And our next city council meeting will be here in the AQMD Auditorium on Tuesday, May 2, starting at 6:30 p.m. And that's the schedule of events.
Thank you. Go on to a consent calendar. Mr. Fox?
On the consent calendar this evening, you have approval of minutes from your April 4 city council study session and regular meeting, ratification of the check register dated March 29 through April 11. Adoption of Resolution 2023-10, accepting the transfer of 37 streetlights from LA County to the city to facilitate the annexation of 26 streetlights into the County Lighting Maintenance District, and an appropriation of $82,500 from the general fund for related utility expenses. And adoption of Resolution 2023-11 to utilize the sole source purchasing contract, source well purchasing contract with California Coast Carpet and Flooring for the installation of flooring at the Diamond Bar Center, and authorizing the mayor to sign the maintenance agreement, and an additional appropriation of $24,000 on the building facility and maintenance fund for this project. And that concludes the consent calendar.
Thank you, Mr. Fox. Would anyone like to pull any items for discussion? If not, can I have a motion for approval?
Motion to approve.
A second?
I have a motion of approval by Councilmember Lowe, and a second by Mayor Protem Lu. Can you take the roll, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Lowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Tang?
Yes.
Councilmember Tai?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Lu?
Yes.
Mayor Chow?
Yes. Motion carries 5-0. Consent calendar is hereby approved. And we'll go ahead and move on to Section 6 for public hearings, which there are none. And we're gonna move to Item 7, which is council consideration. I believe it's Mr. McLean will be presenting.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. I am indeed here to present the draft strategic plan for the period of 2024 through 2027. This follows the 2021 to 2024 strategic plan, in which significant progress on the goals and objectives has been made. We've made a point of sharing those updates throughout the process and quarterly updates, both in public meetings like this one and in print documents that we share on our website. So a little bit about what informs the draft document that's before the city council for consideration this evening. This is the result of extensive work that's been done by the staff, by the city council. We've done staff workshops, surveys, homework amongst all of the departments of the city to get the basis for the plan, to identify the key issues, the items that we think will be of importance in the next three-year period. Those were shared with the city council. The city council then completed a survey to identify its own priorities and important issues. We conducted two workshops and study session with the city council that were open to the public, and we incorporated the feedback of the city council into the proposed document before you this evening. The 2024 to 2027 strategic plan is also informed by significant policy decisions that the council has made in recent years, all of which had extensive public input opportunities, and that public input has been incorporated into that policy. And then that also informs the priorities, goals, and objectives that are identified in the strategic plan. So a few of those include the general plan, the homelessness action plan, climate action plan, housing element, and the ongoing town center specific plan, to name a few. And all of those are accounted for in this document. So let's get into each of the goals and objectives a bit. We'll start by identifying the three high-level strategic goals that make up the heart of this document. These are the main focus areas that the city council has identified as the most important. The first strategic goal is responsible stewardship of public resources. This strategic goal is focused on items including financial health, infrastructure maintenance, fostering economic development, and building a fiscally sound government, and so that we can provide the services and programs that the community expects. The second strategic goal is open, engaged, and responsive government. This strategic goal is concerned with effective government programs and services, quality customer service, transparency and engagement, and a quality organizational culture that attracts and retains good employees to carry out all of those programs and services. And finally, the third strategic goal is safe, sustainable, and healthy community. This goal in particular focuses on quality of life issues, public safety, connected community, parks and recreation programs, and so forth. So within each of the three strategic goals are more narrowly-defined objectives, and we'll go through each of these for the public this evening. Under responsible stewardship of public resources, the objectives identified in the strategic plan as proposed include fostering a healthy and resilient local economy, fostering fiscal health through disciplined long-term planning, cost control, efficiency, increased revenue, and cost recovery, and provide a safe and reliable infrastructure. Each of these objectives support the main strategic goal, and the specific work plan or action items necessary to carry out the goals and objectives will be included in the budget allocations that the city council adopts in each fiscal year associated with this document. In addition to the objectives, we have performance measures that we've identified for each. These performance measures are data-driven indicators that help us determine our progress and make sure that we're on the right track in carrying out the goals and objectives and priorities that have been established. So you'll see these on the screen. For example, budget awards, financial reporting awards, these are associated with meeting the highest-quality financial reporting standards. Pavement Condition Index, for example, is a rating on our streets to make sure that we're maintaining them in the appropriate levels. And each of the next three also have measures that show that we are heading in the right direction when it comes to having responsible stewardship of public resources. The second main strategic goal is open, engaged, and responsive government, and we'll go into each of the objectives for that. The objectives include providing effective and accessible government services that meet the needs of a diverse population, establish the city of Diamond Bar as an employer of choice, build relationships, establish trust, and foster collaboration in the Diamond Bar Performance measures associated with this strategic goal include our overall customer service performance, employee turnover rate, and public records request response time. Moving on to our third and final strategic goal, it is a safe, sustainable, and healthy The objectives identified for this strategic goal include building a vibrant, healthy, and supportive community, fostering a safe and welcoming environment for residents, businesses, visitors, and employees, protecting the community's natural resources, improving transportation and mobility systems, addressing the needs of people experiencing homelessness, and fostering local government, local housing accessibility, excuse me. Performance measures associated with this strategic goal include overall crime rate, average speed travel time on our arterials, the solid waste diversion rate for both the residential and commercial sectors, and the voluntary code compliance rate for open neighborhood improvement cases. And so with that, I know that was a brief overview of a pretty extensive document, but with that, I would make a staff recommendation for the council to consider the document before you, and ultimately adopt the 2024 to 2027 city council strategic plan. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions the council may have. Thank you.
Let's start with Councilmember Tai. No questions. Councilmember Tang? Any questions? No. Councilmember Lowe? Any questions?
No questions. I just want to thank Mr. McLean and his staff for just working so hard for the last two or, is it two or three presentations that we've had on this?
There's been a couple.
A couple, okay, at least two. But I know that you and your team have been working many months and just refining, gathering data, refining, and putting it all together, and plus, it looks fantastic. So thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Lu?
Thank you, Mayor. No questions either that we have. You answered plenty of questions during the study sessions, and thank you for preparing this material, and also coming back with all the information, detailed information that we asked for. Thank you.
Thank you. So how do we get here? I'm not succeeding.
Do you want me to answer that question?
Thank you so much. Yes, I think we'll be, we're ready to adopt the strategic plan. Do we have a motion?
Mayor, I'd make a motion that we approve the 2024 to 2027 strategic plan.
Thank you.
A second?
We have a motion by Councilmember Tai, and a second by Mayor Protem Lu. Can we take the roll, please?
Yes, Mayor, and I will add that we did not receive any public comments, and there's no callers on the line. Councilmember Lowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Tang?
Yes.
Councilmember Tai?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Lu?
Yes.
Mayor Chow?
Yes, thank you. Motion carries 5-0. The 2024, 2027 strategic plans hereby adopted. Thank you so much, staff. Now move on to Item Number Eight, Council Subcommittee Report and Meeting Attendance Report. We'll start over there. We'll start with Councilmember Lowe, please.
Thank you, Mayor. It's been a busy couple of weeks, a couple of really fun things happened. The council, can we have a photo, please, Ms. Santana? Ah, here we go. This was a very, very fun event, and this is the grand opening of Crumble, which is one of our newest bakeries. Actually, it's a, it's a cookie store, serving up really delicious, delicious cookies, various flavors, and I'm told very low calories. So, and I'm sure that's true. So we had, so congratulations to the Hanson family. We just wish them the best of success, and we thank them for opening their business here in Diamond Bar. And by the way, they're located by the, by the Chili's, Chili's and Target parking lot. Another event that was quite fun is drum roll here, was the grand reopening of the Walmart over on Grand Avenue and Diamond Bar Center. Did we not get the photo? Anyway, so Walmart recently remodeled their store inside and out, and if you haven't been there to see it, I really suggest that you go in. It's beautiful. Everything looks great, and one of the highlights of the interior remodel is a hand-painted mural of all the key sites in Diamond Bar. So if you're paying, if you're getting ready to check out, just look up above where the, where the checkout stand, oh, there it is. And you will see this lovely photograph, not photograph, but hand-painted mural of all the key sites in Diamond Bar. So this is the manager of the Walmart. She's in the black jeans without the vest. She and her team are pictured here, and they were just really enthusiastic and just showed a lot of support to our community by having their grand opening. And they've, in addition to, to what they've done to the store, they were very generous. They gave $2,000 donation to the Diamond Bar Women's Club, a $2,000 donation to the Walnut Valley, Walnut Diamond Bar Sheriff's Booster Club, and also $2,000 to the Heart of Hope Foundation. So- drum roll here, was the grand reopening of the Walmart over on Grand Avenue and Diamond Bar Center. Did we not get the photo? Anyways, Walmart recently remodeled their store inside and out. And if you haven't been there to see it, I really suggest that you go in. It's beautiful. Everything looks great. And one of the highlights of the interior remodel is a hand-painted mural of all the key sites in Diamond Bar. So if you're paying, if you're getting ready to check out, just look up above where the, where the checkout stand. Oh, there it is. And you will see this lovely photograph, not photograph, but hand-painted mural of all the key sites in Diamond Bar. So this is the manager of the Walmart. She's in the black jeans without the vest. She and her team are pictured here, and they were just really enthusiastic and just showed a lot of support to our community by having their grand opening. And they've, in addition to, to what they've done to the store, they were very generous. They gave $2,000 donation to the Diamond Bar Women's Club, a $2,000 donation to the Walnut Valley, Walnut Diamond Bar Sheriff's Booster Club, and also $2,000 to the Heart of Hope Foundation. So congratulations to each of these nonprofits. And we know that they really appreciate the support from Walmart. Walmart's a great partner in, in the community, and we wish them continued success. Also, I attended the LASD Council Academy. That is a program put on by the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department to learn more about how our contract with our law enforcement agency worked. So that was very informative. And I also attended the vector control meeting. And I just want to report to everyone that as we're turning into spring now, it's actually absolutely mosquito season. So mosquitoes are just a year-round, year-round insect, and they can be quite nasty. So please check your front yards, please check your backyards. Do not have any standing water because that's where they like to propagate and just make more mosquitoes. So please be sure you empty out all the standing water. Also, it's also snake season. So please be careful, you and kids, dogs, animals, cats. This is the time for snakes to appear. Most of them actually are beneficial. So try not to be too alarmed, but please be careful. And finally, please join me and the rest of the City Council on this coming Saturday for Earth Day Celebration. It's a great time to clean out your electronics, shred your papers, and just generally clean up and enjoy our wonderful earth. And with that, I'll say good night. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We'll go and move on to Councilmember Tai.
I just came back from vacation. I took the easy. But today, this is the first meeting I attend was the study session, a study for our safety. The issue was the, the system to monitor the license plate. And I think we have a very intense discussion today, what a discussion we had. And we are not done yet. We are going to have more session to, we are going to have more data available for us to discuss and consider. And I, I hope the next time more our citizens, more residents can participate in our discussion. Everybody can contribute to, to the, to our discussion of what they thought about the, how to, how the best to make our safe and security system better, how to protect our properties. I think that's very important for all of us. And with that, I say good night to everybody.
Thank you, Councilmember Tai, and we'll have Councilmember Tai, please.
Thank you. So last Thursday with Mayor Pro Tim Lu and Councilwoman Lowe, we were at Crumble, and I think it's wonderful to see it's a family affair. And let me just fill in the numbers for you so you remember what that, no, no calories. But if you remember what Mr. Hanson said, that I found it fascinating. The cookies are great. They're big. When I first went there with my wife, I said, there's, this place isn't going to make it. There's no way anybody is going to pay five bucks for a cookie. And then I tasted it, and I go, I'm in. I like them. And, and what he was saying was there, most people don't understand, they're, they're only 95 calories per serving. So that seems pretty reasonable. It's a big cookie, 90. Because, yeah, they're five, five servings per cookie. So be careful. I'm telling you, be careful. So welcome to Miles, his wife, his daughter, his son-in-law. It's truly a family affair there. And we're so grateful that they chose Diamond Bar to, to, to put one of their businesses. This morning, bright and early, I was at the Foothill Transit meeting. They're looking at route adjustments. Certainly, next month, they'll be talking about budgets. But right now, they're looking at route adjustments. So if you are out and about and you see something hanging on the, the post that identifies the route, take a look because things are going to change. Some are going to go away, and some are going to be rerouted, and some of them are going to be enhanced. But pay attention to those, and don't be one of those people like me that goes, well, how did that happen? When did that happen? Very important information. Back to Ms., to Councilwoman Lowe's point about vector, what they, what they sent was information about after the rains, the warm weather is going to come, and it means more mosquito activity. And you have to, we have to eliminate all of the stagnant water. And, and we think of that as like pails and tires and stuff. But what you see here is a bottle cap from a bottle of water. That can be breeding ground for vectors. So please dump out any water on your property that shouldn't, that's just sitting. And again, to Mr. Fox's point, it's happy birthday to us. We're 34 years ago today, exactly April 18, 1989, Diamond Bar Incorporated as a city. We were, if you, if you remember, if you were here then, we were, were fed up with the county making decisions about how development would take place, and we took the reins. And I think we've done a very good job over 34 years, only to find out that Sacramento's taken away local control anyhow. So we'll give it our best. We'll continue to do our best for Diamond Bar and all of its residents. And with that, I will say good night, and God bless you.
Thank you, Councilmember Tai. We'll go to Mayor Pro Tim Lu.
Thank you, Mayor. I thank your staff for the presentation. Ms. Santana, if you can set up. So as Councilmember Lowe mentioned earlier, we have our Earth Day celebration this Saturday. Earth Day celebration is one of my favorite celebrations growing up because mainly because I get to plant trees with the community. So as I got older, became a father, and I've taken two girls to the Earth Day celebration here, just outside AQMD many times. First time, I actually accidentally stumbled on it, and they had a great time when they were very, very young. I had a great time coloring them, the craft and activities. So and then as they grew a little older, they had a lot of fun and gravitated to learning more about the science between, behind the sustainability. So it is just great that the community is coming together, and we're, we're doing great things to put a positive impact on, for Mother Earth, including e-waste collection, mulch giveaways, and giveaways on recycling bins and paper shredding. So that is great, and we look forward to seeing you there. And it's happy birthday to City of Diamond Bar. We're having a lot of fun with the windmill hunt, and we finally found windmill number one this past weekend. So we'll continue to go. I'm not going to tell you where, but it is at a park. So with that, I'll say good night. Thank you.
Where was it?
The park starts with a P.
The what?
Oh.
Okay. Okay, thank you. So in addition to Earth Day, this Saturday, our Sheriff's Department also has open houses. Fun and great time for the whole family. There's going to be special trees and cars and helicopters and all of that, right? We'll be at the station, what time to what time? 10 to 2 on this Saturday, so I'm planning to stop by with my family, so I hope to see some of you there as well. In addition to Crumble and Walmart, we also have two grand openings this past two weeks. One was Reborn Coffee that took over the old Julie's Cafe location. I had an opportunity to meet with the owner, Jay. This apparently is their 15th location. And they're, I think their main location is Brea. They do roast their own beans. If you haven't been there, they have a, a big menu of not just coffee, but salads and, and bagels and sandwiches. So it's definitely worth a try. And we also have another new restaurant that opened up called Major Dumpling. I don't know if you have seen, but it's right on Grand next to Bagaloo and Tony's Barbecue, which just opened a couple of months ago as well. So I'm continuing to be impressed by the culinary scene of Diamond Bar. There's never-ending opportunity to eat and indulge ourselves. So please go and support our local mom-and-pop shops. They need our, our business. And with that, we'll say good night. Now it's 7:17. We'll go on and adjourn today's meeting. Thank you so much. Thanks for being here.